Board of Ed meeting to order. First order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public religion stand, one nation, under the individual liberty of the Constitution.
Nice to see folks here. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 23, 2025.
So moved.
Motion made by Paula.
Seconded.
Seconded by Alicia. Any comments, questions? All those in favor of approving these minutes, please indicate by raising your hand. I'm assuming you're abstaining.
Correct.
Okay. Public comment, is there anybody here or online who would like to speak during public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to board chairs report. I just want to share two things with folks. For folks who are listening, I think Board of Ed members and most people in this room know that the budget referendum for the town of Wyndham and the Board of Ed budgets is next Tuesday, May 20th, and the polling places are open from 6:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. and people can vote at the usual places they vote, whether it's the Elks Club, the Elks Club, VFW, and Wyndham Center Firehouse. Yes, and I was just going to say, people can also ask for absentee ballots and/or if you're not going to be in town on the day of the election or can't get to vote on Tuesday, you can go down to Town Hall and vote in person if you go to the town clerk's desk. So you could do your absentee ballot right there. And they are open late on Thursday nights until 7:30, 7:00 p.m., so you could go tomorrow. I do encourage folks to get out and vote on this important budget for all of us. We are not allowed by law to tell people how to vote, but we can certainly remind them that it is their opportunity to vote. And for any of you listening, please share with your friends who live in Womantic and Wyndham, the Wyndhams, that this is their chance to have a say in the town and Board of Ed budget. Thank you. The other exciting piece of news I want to share is that Neil and I had a chance to meet with our new incoming superintendent, Dr. Iris Gomero, last Thursday. She reached out and she asked to come sit with us for an entire morning to start to get up to speed on the big issues in the district and what's going on in the district. She asked for lots of information about a whole variety of things that Neil got for her, and she brought with her a draft entry plan for her first months and year in the district. She's ready to hit the ground running and very excited about coming here starting July She did say that her current superintendent where she is in Manchester is very open to her, starting to do, sort of get her feet wet here. So she'll be dedicating about a half a day uncompensated, about half a day a week moving forward between now and the end of June. To that end, she has asked the board to help with something. What she has asked me to do is to start to put together a list of people and organizations and community events that are happening in the district between, you know, starting July 1st. Things that she should go to, places that she should be connecting with people. So if you know of community events, places where she could go walk around and meet people, I mean, we can name some of the obvious things, but I'm asking board members to share with me any thoughts you may have about places and people that she should start meeting with and getting to know. She does also intend to try to come to some events before July 1st as her schedule permits. As you can imagine, she's pretty busy wrapping things up in Manchester, but she will be coming, I think, to the high school graduation and some other events like that. And she would like to have one-on-one meetings with every member of the board as soon as she possibly can. So she's going to be sharing with Neil a calendar, and then he'll share it with us and we can go on and self-schedule ourselves. Or if we need help from Neil and Lauren, I'm sure Lauren and Neil could help us get the board scheduled if people don't know how to use the tool that she shares with us. Does that, does anybody have any questions on that? It was really exciting. It was, it was very refreshing. So not to say that Neil and the interim team haven't been doing an amazing job.
Were a very refreshing bunch.
So please communicate with me on that, board members. And then we're on to the acting superintendents' report. I know we have a special guest tonight.
We do. And good evening, everybody. The first update that I have for everybody is this actually, instead of making four separate updates, these are all celebrations going on at Wyndham Middle School, so I just wanted to share with everybody some of the happenings there. So some funds happened and previous grants received and approved by this board, actually. We were able to finally resume middle school's community garden and new greenhouse. And one of our staff members, Thias Karagyanis, has led the work in maintaining it and starting to plant vegetables and flowers in the community garden, so that's very exciting. I wanted to bring everyone up to speed on that. Meanwhile, the middle school has formed a new partnership with Eastern Connecticut State University, the town of Wyndham, and Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments aimed at educating students and their families about the importance of recycling and composting. The initiative's goal is to help divert valuable recyclable and compostable materials from the waste steam, promoting sustainability at school and at home. I actually have been involved in a couple of these meetings. It's very exciting, so we're trying to do some trial runs this year and really get the program up and running next school year. On Wednesday, April 23rd, Wyndham Middle School Principal Carlos de la Brea joins State Representative Susan Johnson, Mayor DeVivo, and the town manager, Rob Zanetsky, and representatives from CCOG and ECSU and other community leaders for a press conference to just basically go over the implementation steps for the composting initiative. So that was really exciting. So we're really just excited about that. And then finally, this is really cool, there was a great article about this in the Chronicle. Students from Wyndham Middle School's after-school film club showcased their original short film at Yale University on April 12th during the prestigious Congress of Spanish Association of the Film Historians in Yale Latin American and Iberian Film Festival. Under the guidance of the club director and rural language teacher and assisted by other staff, the young filmmakers proudly represented their school and community, delivering a display of creativity, cultural expression, and collaboration. So just really cool things going on, and the article, if you got a chance to read it, was really great. All right, so the next.
Before you move on, any questions on any of that? No? Okay.
So for the next update, I'm just going to call our athletic director up to speak about our recent induction ceremony, our inaugural Wyndham Hall of Fame Athletics Ceremony that took place on April 27th, and I might keep him up because he could potentially speak about the next item, too. All right, great.
All right, so I just have a couple of handouts and a couple of things to hand to you to show what we gave the inductees. So the first, sure, thanks Neil. So the first handout that you're getting is a list of the committee members and our inductees in the inaugural class. The next, I'm just going to hand out this plaque. Dan's Awards here in town did all the awards for us. He does an amazing job, does all the awards for athletics. And then they also received a lapel pin, which I'll pass around, which is really cool. This will get all Hall of Fame members free entry to any athletic event for life. And then we gave each inductee a medallion that sits on a little stand here with their information. I just thought they were really cool. We're very proud of these awards, so I figured I'd share them with you guys. So I'll be, I'll try to be brief because this was very exciting. It was something that we really enjoyed, a lot of hard work went into it. So the genesis of the Hall of Fame actually started years ago before I became Athletic Director, actually when Pat Rizley was still the Athletic Director here at the high school, and it kind of just never got off the ground. And, you know, through the renovation, things like that, there was just always something else. And at last March, at the state championship game with our girls' basketball team, one of the committee members, Neil Curland, came up to Coach Riz and I, and we're like, all right, are we doing this or not? Let's get it going. And the next month, we had our first meeting. So as you can see, the committee members here, all of them, except for myself, are graduates of Wyndham High School, they did not hold that against me. They, in fact, they just needed someone to run the technology for everything. But no, we had a wealth of knowledge with these 11 members. We drew up bylaws, we voted on the bylaws, we had standards, which all this is on our website. We have standards and qualifications for everyone to be into the Hall of Fame, for coaches and for athletes, and kind of just rules for how we, we work as a committee. It was extremely beneficial to me as Athletic Director to gain even more institutional knowledge and hearing all the stories and everything from this group of individuals who, in their own right, you know, are legends of Wyndham High School. The committee met once a month for an entire year, and as we got closer to the date, which was in April, we met a little bit more frequently. As it being our first time doing this, we really had no idea what we were doing. So I felt those, those meetings were very beneficial to us. The very difficult, but also great thing about this task is that it is nearly impossible to come up with a first class of inductees for Athletic Hall of Fame at Wyndham High School. It is an illustrious history of athletic accomplishments, both individual and team, and we have just icons of high school athletics here in Wyndham High School that, or for the state of Connecticut here at Wyndham High School. So the committee took, and as I, I'm not going to go through each individual here, we inducted 14 individuals, and we first compiled a database of as many people as that we could possibly think of. We reached out to all the different contacts that we have relatives. We spent time in the Eastern Library, in the State Library, researching all these things. I have to highlight Chuck Banning and Neil Curland, who did a lot of the research in the libraries for us. The Chronicle is very helpful with all the information that they have, so we compiled the database, and from there, we talked about kind of what do we want the first class to stand for? You know, we could put in, you know, first class just from the 20s, 30s, and 40s. That's how big of a history and how great of a history that Wyndham High School has. But a couple of things as evidenced by this first class is we wanted to first honor all the different eras of Wyndham High School. So we have people that attended school in the 40s all the way up to Alex Korzinski, who was Class 2018. This was the first year he was eligible to be inducted. So we wanted to hit someone from every era. The other thing that we wanted to be very conscious about is highlighting the diversity of Wyndham High School and specifically women's sports. So once Title IX was enacted, Wyndham High School, and I have to give a shout out to, you know, Ed Frigno, who was the A.D. at the time, was at the forefront of creating varsity sports for women athletes, for female athletes. And it was like almost immediately overnight, varsity sports were created. And that's, again, that comes out for this, in this committee process. So with those two things in mind, we ended up debating and contemplating and voting on these 14 individuals, 10 athletes and four coaches to go into the Hall of Fame, and you can see the list of their high school accomplishments here. The actual ceremony itself was, I think, turned out better than a lot of us could have imagined, having, again, never done this before. We did a dry run on the day before, still came in, and I still, for whatever reason, I couldn't get the PowerPoint to work, but we ended up working it out. We had about 120 people attend. We had family members, people flew in from California for it, flew in from the U.S. Virgin Islands, traveled and made a whole week out of it. One of the great things that we had to show everyone that attended was this beautiful building and this wonderful campus. So we actually had current student athletes take groups on tours around the building and showcase it, and some individuals had never been in the building since they graduated in the 60s or 70s. So it was absolutely amazing, and to see that connection between the past and present, and then, you know, the students coming back and going, oh my God, the stories they're telling. I'm like, yeah, you thought you were, you thought you were a bad kid, yeah, what they're doing, yeah. So, no, it was absolutely amazing, and the camaraderie, and each, each individual that was present gave a three- to five-minute speech, and it was absolutely, it was just moving to see how much athletics and how much Wyndham High School and being part of the Wyndham community meant to these individuals and how much it shaped their identity. You know, this is something that I know, having coached and worked in the district and now the A.D., but to hear it from, you know, these 14 individuals and talk about how much this meant to them, you know, even the legend Brian Cruden, who we told everyone three to five minutes, he spoke for 35 minutes. Yeah, it was, yeah, we put him last for a reason. It was just, it just reinforced how important athletics is to this school, to this community, and, you know, how important it is to the development of young people. It's not just about the wins and losses and the records and the, you know, state championships. It's, it's really about saving lives, and that was really evident during this ceremony. So if anyone has any questions, please, oh, one last thing is that nominations for future classes is available on our website. That has, that was up before we did this first class, but it's still continuing there. So we're going to do future classes, so we are still, there's a nomination link on the Wyndham High School Athletics page. So that, does anybody have any questions for me?
Wow, that's a lot of work that went into that. That's really impressive.
It was, it, I don't think we quite understood the undertaking that it would be as you were going through it and the amount of time that it took, but having seen the ceremony, it was definitely well worth it, and, you know, I'm still receiving feedback for it. The Athletic Director, Amity, he went here, his brother was in the first class, he caught up with me at the Scholar Athlete Dinner a week later and was still just raving about it and said how amazing it was. So yes, it was, it was an undertaking, but well worth it and well deserved.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Thank you, thank you, Zach.
Absolutely.
Yeah, just stay for the next thing, and the only thing I want to say about the Hall of Fame was Mr. Swachanko, Class of 71, had that cool, like, old-fashioned white sweater. He was considered the very best, with the letters on it, yeah, it was fantastic. It wasn't like a jacket, it was like a sweater, yeah. So the next thing I just want to quickly talk about while Zach is here, we had two students that were recognized at a banquet, and I'll let Mr. Knopka just speak since he's there about them at our recent CIAC Scholar Athletes Banquet.
Yeah, so this is an annual award that the CIAC gives, and two student athletes were selected. They're selected in a joint process with, between myself and the principal at Wyndham High School, and we look at students' academic accomplishments compared with their athletic accomplishments, as well as sportsmanship, citizenship, and leadership qualities. This year's award winners were Anaya Jenkins and Darian Jenkins, cousins. Still trying to find out if that's the first time Cousins won it. But it was a great night at the aqua turf where they were honored, so every school chooses two, so we were there with 1,700 other people with a great speaker, and it was, it was a great night to sit there with the Jenkins family and be able to share in this with Anaya and Darian, two very, very well-deserving candidates.
It's a great photo, too. Thank you, thank you very much.
I do photography as well.
That's a perk of your job to get to go do things like that.
Yeah, it was, it was amazing, it's, they're just amazing kids, so, young adults now at this point, but yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for that. And then just moving on with the rest of the report, I just have a quick summer school update. Earlier in the year, when we were talking budget, I gave an overview of summer school. Just to let everybody know that we will be having summer school for our K-2 program for focused on literacy. We will be having our ESY Extended School Year Program that takes place every year. Both of those will be taking place at the Barrows Campus during the summer, and we will also be having a high school credit recovery program. Last year, due to air conditioning, we had everything at Barrows, but now that we have a, the high school has its own air conditioning, the high school group will be here, so we're very excited about that. And this will start taking place in July, from July 7th to July 31st. It will be, the ESY and K-2 program will be four weeks, Mondays through Thursdays, from 8:30 to 12:30, and the high school credit recovery program actually runs from July 7th to 24th, three weeks, Monday through Thursday, 8:30 to 12:30 program. And one of the main reasons we shortened it a week is for them to earn their credit. The cutoff date to earn credit is like August 1st, so one year they were in the program and it was causing some students earning credit after the deadline, so we, we made that modification.
Any questions for Neil? Comments? Paula?
At Personnel, we talked about how there were still positions that were open for summer school, but the thought was that the notice would go out and you would quickly get people to jump on.
So I believe Ms. Burney and I will be hanging out tomorrow for, and Friday, doing some interviews, and we, some of the programming has staff, but we will be more complete, we'll be much closer to 100% by the end of the week.
Thank you. Appreciate those reports, that was great. It's always good for us to remember all the wonderful things that are happening in Wyndham Public Schools. So we're on to committee reports. First report is Personnel. Paula?
Personnel met on April 28th, and we discussed the report on vacancies and resignations. I think you remember the meeting the previous month, we had put that on hold because of everything that was going on in the district. And the report that we got looked really good in terms of the folks that we, of course, any vacancy, we would love to have all positions filled, but the numbers have definitely gone down. The two issues that we did talk about were certainly summer school programming, making sure we had everybody to fill those slots, but also the campus safety position, there was some discussion on that as to, because this position has become a lot more important and we really need an assessing individual, the idea is to possibly make that a central office position. Let's see, the other was the HVAC individual that we all heard did not accept the position, but if in fact we get one, it would be an immediate, you have something on that, Neil.
Yeah, so at a future meeting after Personnel, there's another candidate that looked more promising that came out after your meeting.
Oh terrific.
Yes.
Great. Okay, and then, let's see, update on contract negotiations, maintenance contract is still under discussion because I think their union rep was away on leave, which delayed discussions, and I don't think we've started custodians yet. And that's it, all the staff were going to receive the opportunity, have the opportunity to discuss the new state partnership plan. And that was it.
Thank you, Paula. Are there any questions for Paula or comments from other people on that committee? No? Okay, thank you. So we're on to curriculum. Mary?
Yes, we met May 6th, and we had a presentation about music and art, the department collaborations and curriculum overview. It was presented by Enoch Robbins and Kristin Powell, who were very lively and gave a really great presentation. They talked about the National Core Art Standards, which they are reaffirming in the aftermath of COVID, and some of the losses to students' music and art instruction. A lot of progress has been made. The standards are creating, performing, responding, and connecting. So we heard about the curriculum in each department, challenges and accomplishments, and there were lots of little video clips during the presentation, which was great. There's inter and intraschool collaborations, horizontal and vertical collaborations, meaning, you know, the different grades and the different schools. And all these things foster success throughout the district and ease the transitions to new schools and grades. For example, the elementary schools performed in Wyndham Middle School, and the high school came to the middle school, and the middle school came to the high school. So it's all, sounds really very intimate and lots of camaraderie there. And we got some information about some future events, and the teachers finished by citing district-wide event collaborations and the value of arts and music-focused professional development. And we did have a question about having some theatrical classes perhaps or presentations. There's a little collaboration, I think, with the Arts Magnet School, but it's about staffing, really. So that was our meeting.
Sounds like a great meeting, Mary. Yeah. I can see you and Paula are both nodding your heads. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Come to your committee. You only meet every other month, too. I'm like, yeah, that's good.
We had little snippets of actual performances that, that was like really exciting because it showed exactly what the program was doing, so that was really fun.
And the teachers, I mean, there, we do have some quite, we have a lot of amazing teachers in all the different disciplines, of course, in the district, but it really shows that with the art and the music, there's a lot of overlap and so lots of talent as well.
It's great, thank you. Ad hoc elementary school consolidation. Mark?
Yes, well, before I get into that, in the selfish self-promotion and tag on to Mary's report, tomorrow on the Wyndham Weekly Radio Show, we'll be having the Wyndham Middle School Student Play Group come on, and we'll be talking with them, and hopefully they'll give us some other information, and we'll be promoting the play group, so we'll have those children and the teachers. So we'll have those children and the teacher with us. Teacher is Daria. She's from high school, actually, but she goes on to the middle school and, yep, goes on to the middle school and does the play down there. So just a little self-promotion. W I L I fourteen hundred, four o'clock tomorrow.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, Ad hoc Elementary, we met. We reviewed a ongoing invoice from the Arcadis, which is our consultant, and approved the payment of forty-two thousand, three hundred and six dollars and seventy-six cents. And that is, of course, coming from that initial two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget that the town allotted for us. Rich, who is one of our consultants, reviewed the final site test, the Phase Two. I think I've talked about this before. They, in the second phase, they located three underground tanks. That the good news is they were, no leakage, they were, all of them had some liquid in them, but there was no sign of leakage. So they just need to be pumped out. So that's excellent news in terms of contamination. There's a woodworking, a building that was on the property that was used for woodworking. And there's some contamination from leaking bottles there. But again, it'll just require some minor soil remediation at that particular site. So the reports, all of which are in the hands of the city or the town, indicate there is nothing exceptional for that the site is not going to require any extraordinary remediation work. Another one of our consultants, Antonia and Jeff, they brought a table-size layout of the location with small buildings for us to play with so that there could be discussion as to how the buildings would be sited, where we would park them, where would the, so people could actually physically start seeing what it would look like and how to position the buildings. And there was consideration for parking on one side. And the S I had some concerns about facing the sun, so the snow would be melted. And then we had concerns about the bus. And so there was a good discussion around the playtable. After that, Lynn actually reported on our state reps. They are going to go ahead and submit a special exception to see if we can get an additional sixteen thousand square feet over what was the standard state allowance, which will allow us to fully use the, I'm sorry, the,
It will allow us to get reimbursement for the extra space that we need because of special education, needs, breakout rooms,
Yes.
Our school-based health center and,
Trying to think of the report, I just, the specs.
It is specs, right.
Will allow us to fully fulfill our red specs. And then we also, Lynn also met with the town manager and reviewed, there are three resolutions that need to be passed by the town management that are all pro forma. There's nothing committing anybody to building or paying any money. But there are three resolutions that must be passed by the town council in order to be applied on the state grant, which is at the end of June. So Lynn reviewed those resolutions with the town manager and those will be on the June agenda, right?
Yep, they'll be, the resolutions have to be passed and then we have to have approved minutes from that action
That's the grant, yeah.
To actually submit with our grant. One of the resolutions does require them to set a referendum date before November, the November, or at least by the November municipal elections. So they say they're going to do this on June 3rd. So I do plan, and I do think we might need to have a couple of us at that meeting on June 3rd because the town council will probably have questions for us. And I do, the town council is having a special meeting next Monday night, the nineteenth, because they can't have it on the night of the referendum. So I think I'll go there. If you think it makes sense, I think I'll go there and during public comment, tell them that this is coming and what we need them to do so that they don't act surprised when we go on June 3rd. Do you think that sounds like a good idea?
Their Monday meeting?
Yeah, for me to go to the Monday meeting and speak during public comment. Folks, do you think that makes sense? It seems like people forget every time we go talk to them about this.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I'll do that on Monday. I'll let you know if there are any issues that come up because we may need to do some work before June 3rd.
Thank you. And that's the meeting. Mary?
So have all the soil tests come back?
Yes.
Have we bought the land?
That's,
That's one of the things. So the town can purchase the land at any point, but I don't think we're going to try to jam through that decision in June. Probably do it sometime after we get through this fiscal year and start the next fiscal year. But it seems, according to the people at Town Hall, that we should be able to do this without a lot of problems.
Yes, so they've indicated, well, we've heard that before. Yeah, they indicated it could be approved at the town meeting. They wanted to make sure they had the reports and we've given them all the site reports. And I guess the only other, I'm sure there's other ones, but it's like the, it would be required by the owner to clear out these, pump out these barrels, these storage units. So they had to get agreement there, but we're, that's all being handled on the town side. We're not, we're not doing that.
Right. Some people may remember earlier, we thought we'd have to have a referendum to buy the land. But we've been told now by the town that the town only needs to have a town meeting, which means that we might need to work on turning people out to that town meeting so that it gets approved. Oh, Mark? Do we need to add the Finance and Audit Special Meeting Agenda Report to the agenda under Committee Reports?
I guess so.
Because we just met this evening and we're going to be taking action on,
I would move we add the Finance and Audit Committee Report to the agenda.
I'll, can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Brendan. Any discussion? All those in favor of adding that committee report to the agenda? Please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you, Ilda. Thank you, everybody. Okay, so Mark, it's on to you. We had a special meeting tonight at 6:00 PM
Correct.
Of the Finance and Audit Committee.
And at that meeting, we reviewed the year-to-date financials and we appear to be on target to end this year at a zero, without any deficit or surplus. So that we were shooting to come in at zero. The Rita and Neil and the administration is watching the R O's and expenditures on a daily basis to make sure that we don't slip up anywhere. So the plan is, at this point, we're on target, we believe, to come in balanced or at a zero process. We reviewed the budget transfers and you can see them in your package. The committee agreed to refer to the board, the approval of two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars in transfers. And the report is attached. We've also received seven responses to our R F Ps looking for the broker for the health insurance plan when we switched to the state program. We have seven R F Ps, which it was agreed that the administration will review those R F Ps, especially with Rita having more experience in what they do than what we know what they do. And then we'll have a special meeting next week, Zoom meeting next week, I believe on Wednesday, the 21st, for the board to make a final determination of which of, which of the final companies that we'll go with. But we'll, Neil and Rita will narrow it down to two or three at the most for us to look at. There are lengthy and involved R F Ps. And as we've pointed out, there, as has been pointed out, there are significant differences in some of the expenses. So we need to have that taken a look at. So next Wednesday, the 21st at 6:00 PM, in lieu of the regular Finance and Audit Committee, we'll have this Finance and Audit Committee with only one item on the agenda, which is to approve selection of the R F P, of the selection of the consultant, thank you. And all the board members will be encouraged to attend that meeting so that we can, can get that moving because we don't want to, we're already getting close to the switch over. We need those consultants so they can deal with our retirees and our other staff who may have detailed questions about moving from the current self-plan to the, to the new state plan. And then we discuss strategies for the voter, for the referendum. As everyone's aware, next Tuesday is the vote on the budget. And we're encouraging people to help us get out the vote. We can't, of course, tell you which way to vote, although we have a hint. And we're, we're looking for people to want to be involved. There's potential greeting of the parents at the, at the middle school and the high school with some flyers and information so that they can understand it. I think there will be a table at the third Thursday that if people have time to stop by and, and help, I believe that's sponsored by the Democratic Town Committee, but it's nonpartisan. Anyone can, can work with the, with them. And then Lynn reported on the, I'm sorry, my ink is kind of wet here. Oh, we discussed the fact that at some point in time, the town manager decided that only the board of, only the town council can deal with reserve funds, whereas in past, it's always been a part of the Board of Finance. So there's been some discussion about requesting the legal opinion to, to get that narrowed down. At this point, the idea was that we aren't going to do anything of that until after the referendum. The more important thing is to get the referendum done and passed. And that was essentially, well, we also discussed a legal issue about the, this year's budget, where it was already set with the ECS grant of five-hundred thousand, which was then cut, and whether the town still has responsibility to have us spend the, what was approved at referendum for the year. And again, we're going to wait till after referendum and Lynn will request some legal advice as to how we proceed with that inquiry. And that was the meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Mark or comments on the budget stuff? And, oh, is it okay with the rest of the board if we invite you all to that meeting at 6:00 PM next Wednesday to try to make an official choice about the consultant, healthcare consultant? We just have to have a quorum, so.
And the plan is to do it Zoom?
It's a Zoom meeting. It should be a very short meeting. Is that okay? Yes, Mary?
Not, not to be too picky, but can it just be a quorum of, since it's a finance committee meeting, but could we all vote or?
I think, oh, that's a good point. I think we're going to have to notice it as a Board of Ed meeting if we're going to have everybody voting. Yeah. So we'll have to notice it as a Board of Ed meeting and cancel the Finance and Audit Committee meeting.
I'm just worried, what if we don't get a quorum? Passing this around.
Do people understand how important it is for us to get this done? You know, if we drag it on until the end of May, we will have no consultant for our health plans and that will be a big responsibility for existing staff in central office to try to help board members.
Excuse me, Lynn? When, when, what's the date?
We're thinking of trying to have a quick Zoom meeting at 6:00 PM next Wednesday, the 21st.
Okay.
Does that work for you?
Yes.
Does it work for you, Alicia and Brendan? Alicia?
You said on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay.
Not sure. Oh, okay. Okay, well, maybe we can help you get your Zoom fixed. I mean, your ability to get on Zoom meetings fixed. And Katina said yes already. Oh, so I think we'll have a quorum and we can go ahead, but we'll have to notice it as a Board of Ed special meeting. Okay? Thank you. Thank you. We can work on that.
Okay. And if anyone ever has technical troubles, they can always come to central office and sit with me and zoom in with me. Not here, but like in my office.
We'll figure it out. Okay, thanks. Okay, and we're on to the discussion item of Wyndham Middle School, Wyndham Center Transition Activities. And Zach, if you're, if you don't want to wait around for the whole meeting and you want this stuff, you can just come up and grab it. Thanks. Just see it sitting here.
It's all right here. No, Paula tried to pocket the lapel pin, but I stopped her. Actually, Paula and I are looking forward to the parent involvement selections, right?
Thank you.
Another selfless promotion. I'm sorry.
Okay, so Neil, I'm going to hand it over to you for leading this part of the meeting.
Great. Thank you again. I just wanted to have just some quick updates of what we've been doing since we have these two major transitions taking place for the 2025, 2026 school year. So let's go right to the next slide. And one more? Okay, so we have two major transitions that are occurring next year with our buildings, as everybody knows. We have Wyndham Center School closing, which means as a result of that, our kindergarten through grade three students will attend North Wyndham. That's our current kindergarten to grade two and the new incoming kindergarten. And our grade four students will attend Sweeney. That's our current grade three at Wyndham Center. And then, of course, the other major transition taking place is we have grade five that is moving to Wyndham Middle School. All right, so those are the two transitions I was speaking of. Thank you. So here's the stuff. And actually, there's one slide I wish I inserted before. And it actually would have been a perfect segue to Mary's Curriculum Committee Report. Is actually the very first transition activity we actually had was at Wyndham Middle School when we had the fourth graders and fifth graders do the, or the fourth graders do the music activity. Was it fourth and fifth? Or, yep. And met at Wyndham Middle School with the music department and they all like sang together in what will be their new home next year. So that was actually sort of the kickoff of the transition activities. And we also had, of course, our District Music Expo with all of those students. But the, the next thing that we did in April was, in terms of Wyndham Middle School, we held parent forums with administration and myself. I facilitated those parent forums. On April 8th, April 10th, and April 24th, we went to Sweeney, North Wyndham, and Natchog. It was held for all current grades four and five students, families to talk about their transition to Wyndham Middle School next year. And then as a result of those three meetings, we have developed, we're working on and translating a FAQ sheet. I think there's something like forty-five questions that came up across the meetings. A lot of them are similar, but sometimes there's little nuances, so we want to make sure we cover everything. So we are working on that piece. Then something that is happening at the middle school happening next is on June 2nd, this happens every year, oh, it should say four elementary schools, this is for elementary. But on June 2nd, all current grade five students will go to the middle school. They'll get a tour, they'll go in the auditorium and they'll learn about their new school next year. Then what's different this year on June 3rd, grade four students from all four of the elementary schools will have their step-up day at Wyndham Middle School. And it may be a slightly different experience than what the grade five is, but we've talked about that. And we've met with administration and we've been preparing for that. Then following that, that night, for the families, you know, we've met with the, the grade four and five families at the elementary schools. We're going to have sort of like an open house for Wyndham Middle School to allow those families to come in and see the space. And that'll include a tour of the new facility, and I'll mention that in a minute, of the, the new grade five space, and allow them to ask questions, again, if they have any, but in the, now where their students will be. And we think it's a great idea to do it the same day that their students are in. So their students will come, they might ask questions or say things that spark what the parents are interested in, and that will be great. So that is the next thing that'll happen there. And then just switching for a minute, this is a focus on the Wyndham Center Transition. We have welcome nights coming up on May 27th and June 4th. May 27th will be at Sweeney for the current Wyndham Center grade three students. And June 4th at North Wyndham for the current Wyndham Center grade K to two students. That will be similar to the parent forums where administration will be there, but I will facilitate those parent forums and allow parents to ask any questions that they may have about this experience. And then do our best. And then, so those are sort of the activities we've been doing with families. Just to remind us, some operation stuff. The desk and chairs for grade five wing have been ordered or in the classrooms already. This occurred over April break. I think this was mentioned at School Planning and Design. And then two things that are taking place, and this will be a process, and this was mentioned too in a sort of way at School Planning and Design. The planning and coordination of moving instructional materials from elementary schools to Wyndham Middle Schools underway. Again, not actual, the actual moving with some of this coordination. And then moving them from Wyndham Center to Sweeney and North Wyndham. Some of those conversations are beginning, but obviously right now we're in the middle of other stuff, but we're, we're thinking of it. And then, next slide, please. Just to talk about staffing really quick. I presented at Monday staff meetings, that should say, for a couple of the schools. I met at Wyndham, Wyndham Center, we actually did with Dr. Youngberg before she left. We also met at Wyndham Middle School. They had reached out and said, hey, we, we had some questions. So we met at Wyndham Middle School. Meeting with current grade five teachers, sorry, the, I'm failing at plurals. The meeting with the current grade five teachers to talk about what they thought the instructional model should be and, and different things like that. And then we've had several meetings with principals about staffing moves and just keeping people up to speed. And then I'm actually glad because I see our, our co-presidents of the WFEP there, because I'm going to mention this in a second. So we've been working on staffing assignment meetings. This has been going on since February from Wyndham Center. So it's been a very methodical, slow process. We, because we started in February, we're very close. The next meetings that will take place, it says before June 1st. I actually think by next week, we might be done completely placing Wyndham Center. We need to meet with a couple more WFT members that we have placements to make. And then the next movement will be WFEP members. One of the reasons that has taken time, we wanted to make sure we had enough spaces to have those assignments. And actually, before we start inviting the staff, I'll be reaching out to the, the co-presidents and, and giving them the, the protocol we're going to follow, similar to things we've done in the past. They're nodding because they know we've had meetings like this in the past. So I just wanted to give everyone an update on that. And then if anyone had any questions.
Does anybody have any questions or things they want to raise regarding this transition? No, I'm, okay. I hope people will pay, board members who have time to go to some of these ceremonies that we got in the calendar that was handed to us at the beginning of this meeting, I think, you know, especially really important for us to show up and be supportive of, of the Wyndham Center folks as they go through their last graduation ceremonies and, and go to some of the others to be welcoming, I think. And realize the type of turmoil that some people are going through.
Yes, that's a really good point. And if there are other activities that Wyndham Center is hosting, I will notify the board in updates. And then one thing that I, I have here, and I'll send in the next board update, some of those welcome nights. We have some flyers that we've made, so I can share them with you if you're, you're interested in attending.
Thank you. Thank you very much to the staff and everybody who's been working on that and to the staff at the, at Wyndham Center School and Wyndham, and, and all the other schools that are receiving students. It's going to be an important transition for everybody. So. Okay. So I guess now we'll enter, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, which means we're going to have to leave this room and go into the conference room at main office. And Ilda, I will call you on your phone. If she's still there, I'll call her on her phone. Okay. So I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss the Phoenix Academy lease.
Still moved?
Motion made by Brendan. Seconded by Mary. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Ilda, I'll call you on the phone when we get in the room.